Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to our November 7th meeting. And I've got one little piece of bookkeeping I need to take care of. I want to make a motion to add a resolution to authorize condemnation on the specified properties that will be spelled out. The item will be added to the business section, and it's a resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire certain property or interest in property for temporary construction easement and permanent utility easement. All in favor? Uh... As always, we usually open, I'm sorry, I just need to get that out of the way. Darren Green is going to have our invocation for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Simpson, for inviting me to...
Appreciate you being here.
Do this is an honor and a privilege, sir, and I thank you for your service to our county. As a longtime leader in our community, as agriculture, and as a commissioner, we appreciate you. And on behalf of our mutual friend, Commissioner, former Commissioner, and current state Senator, Todd Johnson, we say, "Go Tar Heels." Y'all know what that means. And Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir, for your service. I know y'all's time's coming up, but you've been great leaders for our community, and we know you're going to continue to do just that, and I appreciate you both.
Thank you.
God bless you both in all you do. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for the blessing it is to live in the land of the free and the home of the brave, the great United States of America. We proudly thank you for this small piece of land called Union County, North Carolina. Father, I pray your blessings upon these five men who we have chosen to lead our county. May you grant them great wisdom, guidance, and direction in all decisions that they must make on our behalf this evening and each day ahead, and may that blessing extend to those who will follow them in these seats. I pray your wisdom and guidance upon their staff that's been called upon to give guidance and direction to them. Bless them, I pray, Lord, and give them great guidance. While we live in a unique time in our history, it is not unique at all to you, Lord. We hear of wars, we hear of struggles throughout the world, from Moscow to Beijing, from the White House to courthouse, there are struggles each and every day, but we know that you are already there, and we know that you're in charge, and we trust you to take care of us. Your word tells us what we must do. If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sins, and I will heal, hallelujah, their land. These words are eternal. There is just for much for the great United States, the great state of North Carolina, and our great county of Union, as they were for Solomon in those days. So I pray for Union County, and, Lord, I pray and ask your humble blessings upon these who've been called to lead us. In Jesus' name, amen.
(inaudible)
Okay, I didn't have it on my schedule, but we've got an informal comments. We've got one person signed up. I need to ask you, we cannot have any comments on the rezoning that may be considered tonight, but you can speak on other stuff, but not relevant to the rezoning. That's just the rules of procedure. Mitchell Allen.
Chairman, I didn't sign up for that. I signed up for the personal purchase the county is making for the Union West land, the six acres.
Would you come to the podium?
Yes, sir. Chairman, I didn't make the comment for that. I asked for the purchase of the six acres that I'm opposing, not for the rezoning of Forest Hills Hospital.
Okay, but what are your comments about?
For the opposing, when that's brought up now, or you bring up that...
Well, we can't talk about any public hearings that have been held in the past.
Okay.
You can speak about something else for three minutes, but not...
Well, I was under the impression that the six acres wasn't brought up for public comment, but it was placed later on the agenda from the last meeting that we had. It was, was it not?
Mr. Long. Mr. Long.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can help you. This would be the appropriate time for you to speak, informal comments about an item on the agenda, which I think is item 22782. This would be the appropriate time.
Okay, can I grab my statement?
Yes.
Okay. Evening, Board, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Mitchell Allen. I live at 1104 Flamingo Road in Lancaster. I'm here to oppose the purchase of the land owned by Union West Road Reterrible Foundation. These six acres are off the road, they're not near anything, and the reason to buy the land is absurd. Mr. Hammonds has never heard of offense, or is just not close enough to that that someone can help him out. Seventy-two thousand dollars for six acres of land that will not be used for anything, and it's just seventy-two thousand dollars. I'll give Stoney on this one. Mr. Hammonds, you sat there over two weeks ago and listened to over 20 citizens speak out on proposed home for a wastewater treatment plant that will be built near generations' worth of family land. You yet have offered a solution to this. What will be the outcome of these six acres? Is it spot zoning, contract zoning? This county, this diocese, and other commissioners within this county are being run by bankers, developers, and holding companies that almost outnumber the citizens of this county. Research by me and others have uncovered more than we have time to explain tonight. This county needs to start researching for its soul and see if we can buy it back. I know of a bank that can help with that, it's just down the street from this building itself. If the county needs to really purchase this land due to the fear of kids and teens wanting to explore, then what do you think a wastewater treatment plant is going to do? What are your concerns with the six acres of land, but not the land near hundreds of residents near the wastewater treatment plant? And these are questions that will be answered.
Now, I'll go to a public hearing, rezoning case number 2022-006, Forest Hills. Bjorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Deputy Manager Lancaster. This is a rezoning we call Forest Hills because it's on the Forest Hills High School property. This is a request from the school system to rezone the parcels from a combination of RA-20 and highway commercial to all RA-20 to consolidate into one parcel. Because these parcels have split zoning with them, it makes it complicated to actually implement them, which was why staff actually told the school system that these would need to be rezoned to one zoning district. And because it's a straight rezoning, there's no conditions associated with this. This is the site. You can see Forest Hills High School. And along the road leading to the school, there's agricultural land nearby. In terms of the development status, these are the two parcels. You have the school here, and this is additional land that's owned by the school system, going down to Old 74. Terms of environmental features, there is a stream going through the property, otherwise it's a combination of forested and pasture land, as well as a developed school site. Zoning, you can see the split zoning that's applying here. This is the school site itself. This is the additional parcel to the south. There's a combination of highway commercial and RA-20. So again, if they were to develop it without having the zoning corrected, they would have to apply buffers internal to the site against the two zoning districts. Transportation, there are no funded road improvements in the vicinity of this project. However, there is obviously a school being planned there. It's not yet funded, but if it were, they would have to make road improvements. This rezoning is not related to that, there's no conditions relating to the actual rezoning that would mandate road improvements. Land use plan is a combination of an employment corridor along US 74 and then transitioning way to rural residential, and this property has a combination of access to Forest Hills School Road and Old Highway 74. We have not heard any public feedback about this. No community meeting was held because there was no conditional rezoning application part of this. We have received any phone calls or emailed comments. We did reach out to both Marshall and Wingate, both were supportive of the rezoning, didn't have any concerns about the rezoning application. We noted that this does reduce the amount of commercial land at an identified node for future employment uses. However, utilities are present, zoning is consistent with adjacent residential zoning, and because these properties don't have direct access to US 74, it's not as attractive for commercial development. Staff recommended approval, and the planning board recommended approval. So we're asking you to hold a public hearing on this rezoning.
Any questions? Bjorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bjorn, that, those road improvements would be paid for by the state or local dollars?
The current law is that they would be paid for by the state. They may be made by the school system, but they'd be reimbursed by the state DOT.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody want to speak from the public about the Forest Hills rezoning? If not, I will close the public hearing on the Forest Hills rezoning case.
Mr. Chairman, I would note that if the school system isn't here to speak, that they have asked that this be expedited, and if there's no opposition, which apparently there is none, that it be placed on the business agenda for action this evening.
I think we will get to it at the next meeting.
So at the second meeting in November?
I think we need to see the bond pass first.
Okay, so you want to, we can delay it for two weeks, then? That's fine.
Right.
Thank you.
Were you wanting to speak? I'll open up the public comments again.
Thank you. We do appreciate your consideration on the rezoning. Bjorn did a good job of covering everything. Again, you know, it's responding to a request from county staff to, for this rezoning, we're happy to oblige with them. We do, and the county staff would agree, that we want to rezone the property regardless of whether the bond passes or not. It is split zoned, so it is to the benefit, you know, to have it all, you know, be RA-20. So we would request that that occur, and yes, you know, any consideration, you know, for expediting it is always appreciated. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open it up for discussion. What's the Board's preference on this? Do you want to go ahead and vote on it or wait?
Let's go ahead.
Okay.
I don't.
All in favor of approving?
I'm not in favor. I'm not in favor of expediting it. I mean, I think we ought to wait until, you know, the voters speak on this issue tomorrow. I mean, I don't understand why we're in a mad rush to rezone it the same night. I'm inclined to support it, but by all means, let's wait and see what the results are tomorrow. We've got tens of thousands of voters that will be voting on this bond issue. Let's see what the result is, and then perhaps consider it at the next meeting, would be my opinion.
Stoney?
Mr. Chairman, and I'll be voting to support, going to put it on the agenda tonight. We have a precedence of doing that, you know, for companies, for grants, other things of that nature, and, you know, since we have folks from the school system here tonight, we may as well just go ahead. Since there's no opposition, usually if there's opposition, we won't put it on the agenda that night, but our precedence has been to do that. So I wouldn't want to break with precedence over a school issue.
Anybody else?
Well, I am opposed, so I would ask that it be withdrawn. It should be, you know, it should be considered at the next meeting. I find it kind of extraordinary that we would entertain a public hearing and vote on it the same night when the voters are addressing themselves to this bond issue tomorrow. So I would just respectfully ask that we consider this at the next regular meeting.
All right, I make a motion that we put it on the next meeting agenda, and if it passes, if the bond passes, I'll be strongly supporting it. All in favor of the next meeting? Aye.
Aye.
So we got three. All against? Okay.
Four to one.
Public hearing text amendments to Table 25-1, Table of Allowed Uses, Section 30-150, Radio or Television Broadcast Hour, Section 30.190, Wireless Telecommunication Facilities, and Table 45-1, Minimum Motor Vehicle Parking Ratio, Section 55-070-0, Land Use Buffer Table and Articles 105 Definition. And I do apologize, I've had allergies for three days, and I need to put some glasses on. Now, to remind the Commissioners, this is something we sent back to legal, and they've worked on it to get it worked out. So Lee, go ahead and present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. You're right, this was originally brought to the Board back in mid, middle part of this year, midsummer. The original applicants were two homeowners associations out in Marvin that had some concerns about the way cell towers were permitted in Union County. So they put together a text amendment and went to the planning board, and the Board of County Commissioners, it came to you for a public hearing. Their text amendment basically revised the text in the table of allowed uses to do some modifications for wireless support structures. They revised some setback language, and they revised a handful of definitions. Planning Board heard that at their April 5th meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval. And again, it came to you in May for a public hearing, and you asked us to go back and take some further, take a further look at that. So we did. So we are bringing that back now. So we carried forward those proposed modifications to Table 25-1, and we carried forward the proposed setback provisions in the ordinance. We did make a couple of modifications to it. So the first one, and probably the most important one, is when we started, when staff started looking at how we were regulating towers in general, we saw that we had two sections. One dealt with wireless communication facilities, which you think of as a cellphone tower. The other one dealt with radio and TV broadcast towers, which carry radio and television signals. I mean, and we sort of thought to ourselves, well, why are we treating these differently? From a land use standpoint, they're both towers. So we looked at that, and we ended up, took a little bit more work than just thinking of it as merging those, as treating them the same, but we merged those two sections together. So we, in essence, in this proposal, we are treating those the same. So Section 30.150 would apply to the facility, the compound, and the support structure. That's the tower. 30.190 is specific to the support structure. That's basically what we're doing is, is the primary change is setbacks. The current ordinance has a fall zone setback. So if you, you could have a 200-foot tower that's designed to collapse in on itself that may fall within a 40-foot area. This ordinance has a one-to-one setback right off the bat for a tower, and if it's adjacent to certain residential properties, there's a 300-foot, an additional setback that it has to meet. That's the primary change. You'll see in yours in the packets, there's a lot of pages and a lot of strike-throughs and underlines, and that's basically because we had to take those two sections, delete parts of those, combine them together, and then we had to change some terminology and create some new definitions. But that's, those are the, that's effectively what that change does. Combines the two and has the additional setback regulations, the one-to-one and the 300 feet off of certain residentially zoned properties. Planning Board, and I have the text, if you would like me to bring it up if you have any questions about it. The Planning Board did hear this at their October 4th meeting, and they voted to unanimously recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Oh, and I should say also that if you, this is a staff text amendment, but the original applicants that you heard from in May, some of those folks are here in the audience. They may want to say a few words, I'm not sure, but just want to let you know they were here.
Any questions, Commissioners? Of Lee? Anybody who would like to speak for or against this from the audience? Okay, I'm going to close the formal hearing, public hearing on the text amendments. I'm going to open the public hearing on amendment to Section 65.050B of the Union County Development Ordinance, more commonly called the UDO. Call on Jim King, Senior Planner. Good to see you, Jim.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and our management team. Won't take up much of your time. This is a very simple amendment. Just to give you some history on it, currently, most all appeals of the zoning administrator, any type of interpretation or co-enforcement action is appealed to the Union County Board of Adjustment. However, under our floodplain development section of the ordinance, any type of appeal to the floodplain administrator comes to your board, the Board of County Commissioners. So the proposal here is that we are consistent throughout the ordinance and change the process for floodplain appeals so that they get to the Board of Adjustment as well. That's pretty much it right there. It's just changing two words. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any question, David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this would basically send appeals for floodplain issues to the Board of Adjustment, which is a quasi-judicial entity?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's already an entity that's used to rules of evidence, rules, you know, of adjudicating issues of a quasi-judicial nature?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jim.
And if it's possible, staff, since this is a simple request, if it's possible to suspend the rules and maybe take action tonight?
Jim, is there any urgencies or reason you're asking this?
I'm not sure there's really any urgencies at this time. We just felt that it was a simple, you know, request, and maybe just go ahead and get it on the books.
Let's just stay with the role we're going on.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Recognize Brian Matthews now to talk about Caught in the Act Award recipients.
So tonight, we are here to recognize Mr. Jeremy Cleaver for a Fall 2022 Caught in the Act Award. Jeremy is one of our building code inspectors, and while performing his duties, he was driving by a piece of property, saw an elderly gentleman laying in his yard, felt that he was injured, stopped, checked on him. Turned out, he had hit his head, he was injured. Jeremy then contacted the 911, waited there until the paramedics got there, and we want to recognize him for his going above and beyond. Oftentimes, people just don't take the time to stop when they see something, and we just felt that it was important that we recognize Mr. Cleaver for his efforts. He's here tonight. If possible, I'd like to have him come up and maybe get a picture with the chairman, and we'll give him a nice little presentation here. Would you mind coming up?
Yeah. Yeah. Appreciate all you do, never realize what a bunch of people is willing to do.
Recognize Patrick Nalan, who's going to present a lifesaver award recipient.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my honor tonight to recognize Chad Williams, who is a maintenance worker with our Parks and Rec Department. Chad was working outside with a coworker, and they were trimming some bushes, and that coworker was stung by an insect. That coworker immediately started having trouble breathing and was faint of breath. Chad has an allergy himself, so he recognized the signs. He had an EpiPen on him, and he administered that EpiPen. Those quick actions from someone that was knowledgeable were imperative to this case and the treatment of this individual. So we recognize Chad with a lifesaver award, and if Chad would come up, we have a presentation for him.
Oh, he's so happy.
There's about 8,000 comedians unemployed. All right, now, we go to the consent agenda. Do I have any comments or motions? Stoney?
Mr. Chairman, can we take item 22782 off consent?
It is off of consent, isn't it?
Yes, if you would. At the top of your agenda right there, consent, just read that. Comment, staff asked to have that moved from consent earlier today.
Yeah, we removed it. 22782 has been moved off of consent to business section. Okay, any other comments?
Motion to approve consent as amended.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor? Okay, Chris Boyd, come on up, I've been waiting for this for two years. And we're gonna recognize a special lady as soon as you get through with your little Sort of give them a preface of what led up to this. We had something we didn't know.
Yeah, part of the presentation, I hope, I catch everything you're looking for. So, thanks, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. I'm pleased to give you an update on, I want to say, a very unique project, but a very special project to a lot of people that worked on it and been a part of it. I'll go a little bit about background of the project and how this project came to be, talk a little bit about the existing conditions when we went out and, and saw the cemetery for the first time, talk a little bit about the restoration efforts that we underwent, then talk a little bit about actually mapping the grave site, some of our next steps, and then some special thanks to everyone that kind of participated in, in the project. So, in late, I said late 2021, it may have been a little earlier, Mr. Chairman, county leaders became aware of this cemetery, and more specifically that the county still own the cemetery. So this cemetery is located in the Rocky Rivers Estate neighborhood. It served as burial site for the old county home. That was the county home from about 1911 to 1969. There, based on some research that we did, we estimated it was about 169 grave sites in that cemetery. And for decades, and probably since 1969 or about that time, the cemetery wasn't maintained at all. So as soon as county leaders found out about the project, took immediate action, gave our group some direction on, let's get this, this property recovered and the cemetery recovered. So where's it located? I mentioned the Rocky River Estates, so if you look at Rocky River and Newtown Road, you'll see the smaller red boxes basically where the cemetery is located, the larger red boxes where the Union County home was at the time, from 1911, 1965, or 1969. Here's a little bit closer up view of that property. These were the existing conditions when we first stepped foot on the property. Just overgrown, thick briars, shrubs, completely covered the site. So when we started talking about, all right, how we recover this site, one of the important things was to make sure we respect the remains and the graves that are on that site. So it meant that we couldn't put a lot of heavy equipment on the site. But to start things off, we needed to get survey number one, so we didn't encroach on any, any of the neighbors' property when we started clearing things off. We did give the neighbors notification that we were about to start some work. We used the Union County Grounds and Landscaping Company to help us remove kind of first-step brush vines, briars, fallen trees, but they could only use light equipment and tools because they didn't want to disturb any of the grave sites. So basically, they basically threw everything on tarps and pulled it out of the site. As they were clearing the site, we started seeing some stone markers for grave sites, so we made sure to tag all those. After that was completed, we did some tree removal, so anything less than four inches, basically, we're able to get those off the site. Then we did some site spraying, and all the time, we're doing some research on, on some county records for the cemetery. So this is some examples of the markers that we found. On the far left-hand side was kind of the typical marker for most of the graves. There are two graves that have well-preserved markers that you can see, but typically, all the graves have the one on the left. This was some of the early stages of the cleanup. And then, what does it look like now? Right now, this is, you can see it's a pretty clear site, we're able to get most of the big trees out, certainly all the shrubs, all the bushes out of the way. Again, another side of what it looks like now. As part of this project, we thought it was important to be able to do a little better job identifying where the grave sites were, so we engaged a nationally-recognized firm that specializes in grave mapping. Naming that firm was Omega Mapping Services. They located graves using ground penetrating radar. It was a pretty interesting process. They actually looked for a void in the soil where the remains were located. As each of those grave sites were located, they attached a GPS coordinate to each, and they were able to confirm 160 graves on the site. In addition to locating, they provided us with a map of the cemetery and the graves, and you can see those are 160 of the graves. There's just another layout of that. What's interesting is, you see the darker, the darker section is basically what we anticipate was a road, a service road for the old cemetery, and less well-defined was the purple section, which is probably just a turnaround to get out of the grave site. Just another view of that map. And what are our next steps? So we've got on order right now permanent grave markers. Soon as those come in, we'll be installing those, that are like four-and-a-half-inch stainless steel discs that will be installed with 10-inch carriage bolts at each grave site. We're looking at the feasibility and appropriateness of installing a fence around that site, and we're also looking to start a design and potentially installation of a memorial marker for the cemetery. And of course, we're gonna start maintaining that property now that we, we know we own it. So there were a lot of people that were involved in making this project happen. First and foremost, county leadership, some on the board and our county management team, our Parks and Rec team, led by Jim and David Pascal, are they still here? No, they have left. They were instrumental in mostly removing the, the trees, and there were a lot of trees that got removed. Providence Landscaping, as I mentioned, Omega Mapping Services, Lawrence Associates did our survey, boundary survey. Barbara Moore actually helped in doing some of the research and providing some information to us about the history of the cemetery. And the residents of Rocky River Estates, when we talked to them, they were very supportive of what we were trying to accomplish and what we were doing on site. And then, Edwina W., you banks, are you gonna talk about her?
Yeah. Anybody that knows any of the Winchester girls, Suzie, Jane, Edwina, and then they got a brother, Paige Junior. I knew their dad, and this lady is still sharper than I am, and she's a year or two older than me. But Jerry, this is Suzie Winchester's oldest sister. Of course, you know her too. This is one of my most proud accomplishments as a, being on the board. When she called me, I remember going over to the county home with my friends when it was still occupied, and they called it the poorhouse. It didn't want, signed it and say that, but this was where families took indigent people that they just couldn't handle no more. And I would walk, we would walk over and run home scared as little boys, because if you get close to it, you'd hear them hollering. And she said, what she said that made me realize I had to do something, she said, "Me and you probably have a relative buried over there." And I thought, Lord, you know, this is like somebody saying, "Jump in this pond of crocodiles and save my dog." When she said that, I knew I had to do it. So, and I do appreciate the board going along with it. So I would like Eddie, as she likes to be called, to come up, and we're gonna recognize her and give her a plaque, and her daughter's with her tonight. You don't have to come, but I-
I'm on the radar.
But you, you can attest to how sharp your mom is.
Oh, yes, she is.
Okay.
I would like to thank you for picking up the ball that got dropped back in 1971 when the property was sold, and for these gentlemen in accomplishing what you've accomplished to preserve this historic cemetery. It's, it's an example of how local government works.
Man, for the record, I think you look younger than these two guys here. You were way younger than these two.
Well, Edwina, sometimes Michelle says, "I just need the day off from the man, I'm tired of keeping him straight." So, and behind every good man, there's a woman.
That's right, thank you.
Okay, but really proud of you and richly deserve recognition.
Thank you very much, and we'll let you all continue with business.
Okay. Now we move on to the rezoning case of CZ 2022-007, Lucas Lands. Lee, would you come up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll recall, this is a rezoning request that, which a public hearing was held at your last meeting, October 17th. There were a group of about 21 people who, who spoke at, at the public hearing. Most addressed issues such as noise, odors, lighting, proximity to the Porter Ridge School Complex. The planning board heard this and made a recommendation, 52, to approve it. Again, you heard input from residents at the last meeting. Of course, the applicant is here, can answer any questions from the applicant's standpoint, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as far as the process, the rezoning goes.
Any questions, discussion?
This money, the rezoning, we can use it as a landfill convenience site for a radio tower, telephone tower, and wastewater plant, correct?
Correct. I will, not a landfill, but, 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 yes.
Waste, waste, collection site.
Yes, sir. Convenience site, yes, sir.
Okay. And then, what, what's the limitations? The money's coming from the state. What are the limitations on those, Michelle?
The funding that is expected to be used is money that was given to Union County by the General Assembly, $8 million to Union County for land acquisition, design, permitting, and construction of any of the following: a new water reclamation facility in the Crooked Creek watershed, and expansion of the Poplin Road pump station.
Okay, can that money be used for anything else?
Those are the specific things that were included in the budget, so that's the language from the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michelle, back in, I think it was the first regular meeting in August, did this board unanimously vote to proceed with the land acquisition, the capital project ordinance, and a resolution giving assurances to the state in how this $8 million ARPA funding would be used?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hales?
Mr. Chairman, comments were made last week that I didn't feel were totally accurate. One thing, there's been a lot of deliberation on a site. We are out of wastewater, and it's, it's a 10-year process, I believe, to, to build a site. We're out, we're out of water. It has been evaluated that this is one of the last locations that the creek can facilitate discharge from a wastewater creek.
That's not true.
And, you know, I'm just going off what states, and it's not a dialogue we're giving tonight. So it's, it's something that has been researched very thoroughly. We have funds to be able to purchase the land, further evaluate to ensure that what we, what we build here is something that would be acceptable in the community, and so-
Do I have to ask the audience to remain quiet, or I'll have to ask you to leave?
So it's, it's been with a lot of thought, and, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we proceed with rezoning this property. It rezones two parcels, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
It is one. It is currently one parcel property, however, it would be split into two, yes, sir?
Yes. So I'd make a motion, we proceed with the rezoning of this property as described.
Read that into the record.
Union County Planning Board recommends that the Union County Board of Commissioners approve rezoning CZ 2022-007, submitted by Lucas Land LLC. It's owned the property, appearing on tax map as parcel 08264-008 in Goose Creek Township from RA 40 to RA 200 CZ. My motion is to adopt the ordinance, approve and revision of the official zoning laws of Union County, North Carolina, and adopt the consistency and reasonability statement for approval pursuant to GS, North Carolina GS 160D-605. Union County Board of Commissioners, the board, does hereby find and determine that the adoption of this proposed map amendment is consistent with the currently adopted Union County Comprehensive Plan, the plan. The adoption of the proposed map amendment is reasonable and the public's overall best interest. The intensity of the proposal zoning district is consistent with the adopted land use map for the area in which the property is located. The land use map is incorporated as part of the plan. The purpose allows use on proposed rezoning will produce minimal traffic impacts on adjacent properties. Site will be developed with buffering consistent with the Union County Standard Development Regulations, which should provide a vision bearing to protect adjacent residents from unreasonable noise and visual impacts from the property.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion, comments? Commissioner Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've often said that government services is a tug-of-war between public interest and private interest. Some consider certain aspects or services provided by government as essential to their health, safety, quality of life, and livelihood, while others see those same services as an intrusion and a waste of money. Delivery of water and treatment of wastewater is such a service. Municipalities, industry, commerce, and development see it as essential, while those in rural areas- see it as essential, while those in rural areas don't recognize a need. In the case of wastewater, there are also those that raise the issue of not in my backyard. Some try to use fear as a deterrent, citing all sorts of information, some that's factual, some that's not, while others simply take the approach, "I'll just put it somewhere else." I became a commissioner in 2010, and as the former county extension director, was a part of many discussions prior to that time regarding growth and development, wastewater treatment and disposal, biosolage disposal, impacts of nitrogen and phosphorus on surface water, groundwater, and wildlife, and their primary sources, whether wildlife, agriculture, or human from septic tank failure, or sewage seepage, or spills. The consideration and citing of a wastewater reclamation facility in the lower Crooked Creek area has been discussed prior to recent days and has been a part of the county's formal comprehensive plan at least since 2010. So, to insinuate that this effort has been done in secret is simply not true. Environmental studies and citing considerations have been ongoing for years. I have my, I may have my date wrong, but I believe it was in early 2020 at a forum held at the Agricultural Center that I introduced a motion to seek to develop an interlocal agreement between Union County and the municipalities inside the county designed to provide clarity and direction on future growth and development, and specifically the demand for water and wastewater. The motion passed unanimously. I believe it was the following year, early 2021, at a similar forum held at South Piedmont Community College, that each municipality was asked to share their master plans for development. It was at that meeting that officials from Fairview indicated they had no immediate or anticipated long-term need for sewer capacity. Unionville did not attend the meeting, but consensus was their response would improve similar. After weighing this information and considering the current land use of the area in question, I, along with the majority of the board, voted to not move forward with locating or purchasing land on Lower Crooked Cree, Lower Crooked Creek east of 601. Since the interlocal agreement had not gained traction, I believe it was Commissioners Williams and Rushing who were appointed to work with staff in exploring further options. Wake County, I believe, was an example cited, and I believe discussions were held with officials in Wake. In the interim and in an attempt to consider alternatives in light of board action, staff identified the current property referred to as Site B, the Lucas Property, as a potential site. Upon examination, it offered a number of efficiencies to the current system. It was an adequate location for replacement of the existing Crooked Creek plant and provided an opportunity to carve out a limited service area which would not encroach-
That's what you get.
Somebody's back there throwing the switch on me. It provided an opportunity to carve out a limited service area which would not encroach upon Fairview or Unionville. The board unanimously agreed that this could serve as a potential site in the future, and staff began to negotiate with the owner. The county could simply have moved forward with condemnation, but in an effort to reduce harm to the existing business and its employees, a rezoning was considered the best option. Decision to cite waste treatment facilities of any kind is never easy. As a part of my consideration of this vote, I reached out to a former colleague, Dr. Robert Rubin, former biological engineer at NCSU, someone who has done considerable work with Union County in the past and has consulted on water and wastewater issues throughout North Carolina and across the nation. Here are just a few excerpts from his response. "Wastewater systems developed through the National Point Discharge Program have a finite life. Over time, structures can degrade or the wastewater discharge requirements become more stringent, and existing technology cannot meet the permit requirements associated with a discharge. Such is the situation at our Crooked Creek plant. As treatment facilities approach the allowable technology limits associated with the system, either improvements to the existing wastewater infrastructure are implemented or a new, more advanced treatment system is developed. Treatment of wastewater to ever increasingly stringent limits is the norm throughout the country. Wastewater is, wastewater treatment is a necessary and essential component of the public system of infrastructure. Effective waste treatment allows communities to sustain existing populations and may be designed to accommodate anticipated growth. Communities that fail to design for growth and development will face a sustainability crisis in time. The treatment technologies available today can treat wastewater to levels that allow for reuse. In North Carolina, we have several municipalities that, that have incorporated advanced treatment and disinfection alternatives that permit the application of reclaimed water on harvested crops or on turf fields associated with golf operations, baseball fields, soccer fields, and other recreational, recreational amenities." As been, as has been made clear, this motion is simply to allow Union County an option for dealing with the need to decommission the current Crooked Creek plant, design and construct an alternative plant, and provide flexibility in decision-making regarding future expansion of wastewater facilities. Some see this decision as encouraging growth and development at the detriment of farmland and rural lifestyles. When I returned to Union County in 1981, the population was 53,000 people. Today, it is 270,000 plus. In comparison, North Carolina was at about four and a half million people in the early 80s and is approaching a million people as we speak. The pressures of development are not confined to Union County. I learned only through study of similar communities throughout the U.S. that there are no easy answers. Growth is like a water balloon. If you squeeze it in one area, it will only expand in another. Union County is RA and RA 40 by right. One-acre lots is not complementary to preserving agriculture and rural landscapes. The decision to replace or expand wastewater treatment in Union County will be a decision of future boards with significant input from state government, regulators, and groups both for it and against it. By owning this property, that decision can certainly be a more pragmatic one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Commissioner Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't prepare as much as you did for that jury, but I will tell you this. That plant has gone from a $130 million plant to a $274 million plant. The, uh, when you look at the heel splitter muscle, when you look at the cost of the plant, when you look at the public opposition to it, which, why did we even have a public hearing if we didn't plan to take public opposition into account? Nobody showed up for the positive. It seems like, it seems like they maybe showed up at a different time, wasn't on camera. I didn't see them on, on camera. Maybe they, they just told us what they wanted. But the people who came that night were unanimous in their opposition to the plant. I don't think I remember one person saying that they were for it. When you look at the plant that we're replacing, the one consistency over 12 years as Union County Commissioner that I've seen is that, for some reason, Public Works has gotten it wrong time and time again. So, when, years ago, when the 12-mile creek plant was put in, there was pipes put in the ground that weren't properly tested. Those pipes failed inflow of water, so we're treating that inflow today at the cost to the ratepayers. The pipes go into the plants. We're gonna be discussing a little bit later tonight how the, uh, the pipes are not the right size. They're too small, which means that if, what it means back in 2006 was a photograph in, in a fledgling paper at the time called The County Edge that showed about a four-to-six-inch water fountain of brown sewage coming out of a manhole, because, again, the, the plant couldn't treat all the waste going to it. And at that time, a three-million-gallon plant was permitted and pending for over 12 million gallons a day. Again, we're here at a plant that has failed or is pending to fail after 40 years of service, and we gotta build a new one. If, if people's septic tanks were failing after 40 years, that would be a problem, and, and we don't have a solution. We have to fix that septic tank. So, rather than fix the plant we have, we're looking at building an eight-million-gallon sewer plant, which is bigger than a lot of what we talked about before. You have those small pipes, those fines that we got back in 2006. We asked for a list of all the fines, tens, $10,000 a month, $8,000 a month, fine after fine after fine for polluting the creek. So, until we have a better hold on what we're doing, I don't think there's any rush on this plant, just like, like you said, it's gonna be a 10-year process. The next board can make decisions just as good as this board. And in 2006, I made that motion to allow the next board to make those decisions. And when Alan Balkam and Parker Mills and Kevin Presley and Roger Lane and Lanny O'Kenshaw were on that board, it came about that, um, that plant was not going forward with because they found out that they were being fed false information through county manager at the time. So, I'm not gonna vote for this. There's no rush on this. It's a 10-year process. What's a couple months gonna do? If, um, if we can buy land, which we, another item we've got on the agenda for tonight is to buy land just to look at, not for sewage, then, then I would say the argument could be made that this land could be a, a buffer from any attractive nuisance all the way to the creek. If that's okay with the state to do it at the equalization tank, then I guess the state would be okay with that, which I don't think they're gonna be okay with it. And I would like to make a good decision that takes into account, can we pay for this? Do the people want this? Do the people that are driving in traffic want this? Do the people who live in the area? You know, I, listen, folks, I've made a lot of votes that was contrary to what the people next door wanted. You know, I've rezoned properties. I've, I've gone and talked to people about commercial properties that were near their house. I'm not against rezoning properties, but there's no reason that this has to go through tonight. There's no reason that this has to go through anytime in the next two months. So, I'm gonna be voting against it, and I would hope that the, my fellow commissioners would join me in voting against it. And, and like I said, if we can buy land and not do anything with it, then, then, and if the state's okay with that, or are we gonna have to pay the state back this money? Those are all questions that I have, and, and I think those are valid questions. And, um, again, if we're gonna have a sewer plant that's gonna fail in 40 to 50 years because we can't find parts for it, I see that as another failure coming from our Public Works Department in being able to manage what they have. So, why give people more to manage when they can't properly manage what they have? Thank you.
Commissioner Hales.
I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Rushing because we had a resolution about a month ago that Chamber of Commerce, all participants, the Economic Development Advisory Board, five municipalities did resolutions. Two of the, two additional municipalities, their mayor came and spoke in favor of the plan that we're trying to operate on. So, this is not, you know, they didn't show up to last month's meeting. They put their, they, they put their feelings in writing, supporting the actions of this board and the future for Union County. Because like Jerry pointed out, you know, wastewater is a fact that, that our communities have to, have to manage. So, I continue with my motion.
All right, I'm gonna call a vote on the motion. All in favor? Sir? Call, all right, question on voting. All right, call the question on voting on this rezoning application. All in favor to move on, to vote? All opposed? Okay, now I call for the vote on the motion of rezoning the Lucas Lands deal. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Put it in their town. Put it in their town.
Put it in your backyard. Put it in your backyard.
Put it next to your grandchildren.
And your schools.
What about schools?
Failures.
How kids.
Put it in us? Put it in your backyard. That's where it needs to be. Not mine. I've been at home with my kids.
Deputy? Deputy? Anybody that? Okay. Next, we have appointments to boards. Appoint members to the Region F Advisory Committee and Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. Region 1F, Region F Aging Advisory Committee. Patricia Kinley has submitted her application to serve as a delegate on the Region F Aging Advisory Committee. This vacancy has been advertised, and no other applications have been received. I make a motion to appoint Patricia Kinley. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. There are at least three vacancies on the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. These vacancies have been advertised. Beatrice Coulson has applied to serve on this committee. I make a motion to approve Ms. Coulson on the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, move on to purchase of real property. This is about some land at, uh, beside our Poplin Pump Station. It is approximately six acres, located near the 7300 block of Indian Trail Fairview Road. The parcel of property is adjacent to the Poplin Pump Station property. The authorized not-to-exceed amount for the purchase represents the assessed tax value of the property. An amount not to exceed $79,100. The funds for this purchase would originate from the money allocated from the state of North Carolina for land acquisition, design, permitting, and construction of certain infrastructure improvements, including expansion of Poplin Road Pump Station. This property is currently owned by the Indian Trail Optimist Club, and they are sort of holding it in trust for the Indian Trail Scout Hut. And this has been sort of a contested article, but I decided to put it on the agenda because it's such a great cause. We do have the money available. I don't believe the next board's gonna use all the money. It will, they, they cannot do anything to improve the Scout Hut at Indian Trail. They're gonna, I believe, do beside it- They're going, I believe, do beside it, right up to it, but not touch it. We all know what a great organization Scouts is, and I'll open it up for more discussion. Commissioner Haynes.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I, I received a list where they had inspection of the Scout Hut, and it falls kind of in line with like we discussed on some of the other building permits that we have. It is in such disrepair, if they started to do anything with it, they'd lose the whole building. So I think this organization is trying to raise funds to, and I can remember that Scout Hut being there about as long as I can remember, and it's very integral to Indian Trail. Other thing is that we also, at our Poplin, we are erecting a EQ tank. Is that correct, Brian? Is it?
Yes, sir.
Equilization tank?
Yep, and it's what, one to three million?
I believe it's three million, if I'm thinking.
Quite large tank, which pushes out right to the limits of our property. This property is adjacent, and actually, we looked at it earlier and could even facilitate some storage of equipment if we necessary. So I see it as a win for the Scouts, a win for Indian Trail, and a good utilization of this state money that they, they gave us, because even, even purchasing the land we just voted on would not consume all of those funds. So I'd like to, I, I'll be supporting moving forward with buying this property. It's landlocked, so it's, it's something that will, I think, Mr. Chairman, you and I went out to, to look at this property, and you can hardly turn your vehicle around. If you back up too far, you're going to be in the creek. So I think it's a good utilization of...
And we will eventually need a operations center in that part of the county as it continues to grow for our public works department, so. Any other comments? Stony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, you're, you're doing the manager tonight, or Michelle, which one do I adjust the question to?
I believe Michelle was acting in that role.
Okay. Michelle, can we donate the eighty-five acres at Lucas Landscaping to the Boy Scouts?
I actually think that's probably a legal question, so I'll look to the other end of the, of the dais.
Commissioner Rushing, I, I don't have that budget provision that Ms. Lancaster read earlier in front of me, but my recollection of that is that it states that it's for two specified purposes, and I believe that donation of that property would fall outside of those purposes.
So if we do this, that is, does it set a precedence that we can use the eighty-five acres at Lucas Landscaping for a Scout project or any other five oh one C three?
No, it, it's not setting a precedent for buying Scout land, it's buying buffer on the EQ tank. And you know, we, we, you and I both ran on getting water to more people in Union County, and we are running at fifty-one thousand dollars per tap. So we're looking at less than two taps, and we used ARPA money for that.
So is our county ARPA money restricted to the Crooked Creek Basin?
So, what?
Was our ARPA money that we use for that restricted to the Crooked Creek Basin?
I don't believe, I don't know where all the water lines have been approved. We were going to put some over there, and then there was, one commissioner talked about calling the FBI, so we sort of stopped.
I think those are in the New Salem, Unionville area. If, again, the question I have is if we can't do it for the Lucas Landscaping land, can we do it for this six acres? And I think the answer from staff is...
I don't see the correlation of what you're saying. We're talking about rezoning a tract of land, and this is talking about buying land.
Okay, so the whole point of rezoning the land was to buy it. I think we have to buy it, what date, November the 10th, for the Lucas Landscaping land? So we have to actually purchase it by November the 10th. So if we buy this land, and, and the next board has to come up with seventy-nine thousand, one hundred dollars to repay the state because it's not an approved use, approved by the state, or is it approved use? And if it is, then that opens the door to a lot of uses on the Lucas Landscaping land that we'll be purchasing before November the 10th.
I believe the deputy managers just told you it would be available for purchase, right?
Ask me that question again, I'm not sure what you're asking. I'm not sure it's the same question.
He's wanting to know, can we use the state funds at eight million to buy that land next to the EQ tank?
I don't, I think that what Commissioner Rushing asked was if it could be donate, if the land could be, this, the Lucas Lands property could be donated once purchased with the state funds. I can re, I've, I've read it, I'm happy to, to read it again, what the state budget says. It, it's pretty clear about what the uses can be. It's land acquisition, design permitting, and construction of any of the following: a new water reclamation facility in the Crooked Creek watershed, an expansion of the Poplin Road Pump Station. And in terms of our county ARPA funds, those restrictions, of course, did not apply. That was money that came directly to us. This language is from the General Assembly's Budget Ordinance that was adopted. Using ARPA funds, there's some correlation, but they're not exactly the same.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll be voting against the motion. I don't think generally that the county should be in the business of solving property owners' problems. I do agree that there could be an attractive nuisance with the county's property, but that can be accomplished in ways that don't involve purchasing the six acres, so I'll be voting against the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Simpson.
Did I, do we, do we have a motion? Not yet.
Oh, I thought there was one. Anyway, I'm voting against it.
I have, this is about the third time I think this has come before the board.
It hadn't come out here for a vote. Got pulled.
And I understand a couple of things. First is the Rotary Club and not the Optimist Club. As a, as a former Rotarian, we, we try to live by the four-way test. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better, better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? That's, that's wearing a Rotarians hat. I was too busy, too, too interested in cars, football, and women to get my Eagle Scout Award. I was a Life Scout. I missed it by two merit badges. Would wish those days back. Had three sons, three Life Scouts, Eagle Palms, Philmont, order there, Scout Master for about twelve years. Know two organizations that are dear to my heart, and those two. But I'm not wearing those hats tonight. I'm wearing the hat of a county commissioner, and I've been entrusted by the citizens of this county to make decisions based on what is, what is right for the taxpayer. And I consulted with staff. I have, it's my understanding from staff that, that we really have, that it's not a necessary purpose for that property. And I feel, it is landlocked, it's a mess. I feel for it, I feel for the way it is. We, we have a, a budget line every year. We, we, we take applications from community groups that have requests, and we could certainly take those from the Boy Scouts to, to rebuild or support their, their effort on their Scout Hut. But I, I simply can't support that motion.
Okay. I'll make the motion to, for us to purchase it. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
It fails. Okay. We're looking at the adoption of a resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire certain property for interest in property for a temporary construction easement and/or permanent utility easement. Brian, you want to tell us anything about it?
Sir? As the board is aware, staff has come to the commissioners with the, the issue of not being able to acquire enough of the easements to move forward with the Crooked Creek Interceptor Project. We're about twenty-seven properties shy of being able to complete all the easement acquisitions. This is a project that is intended to allow for additional flow to be able to go to the Crooked Creek Treatment Plant. There are areas of the Crooked Creek Basin which are restricted because of pipe sizing. This project would be a, an additional pipe, or I'm sorry, not additional pipe, a, a new, larger pipe that would be built in the same area as the existing pipe. Existing one would be abandoned, new one would be operational, and it would provide additional capacity and flow for those areas that are restricted. This is Phase Two. There are two other phases for additional interceptor lines that would potentially be built if the commissioners choose to move forward with this project.
Any discussion? Stony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I want to be opposing this tonight. The...
Would you get a little closer to the microphone?
Can you hear me?
My ears are stopped up.
Okay. I'm going to be opposing this tonight because, again, these pipes that were put in the ground to serve a sewer plant that was constructed to handle the amount of waste it handles somehow was not enough. But there is another option. In, near, very near that pipeline that serves the far western part of the county, there's a pump station that's been decommissioned that handled five hundred thousand gallons per day, enough for eight, approximately eighteen hundred new homes or businesses that could be done quicker and without going back to these businesses and homeowners along the way and saying, we got to take your land again and go through this process again and disrupt your lives again. This should have been done the right way to begin with and not waiting until now. And we have this problem other places as well, which goes back to the problem is why are we undersizing pipes? Why are we not building things to the size necessary when we're, when we're building? You know, we, we rely on our public works staff to come to us and give us good information, and as I said before, in my twelve years, things cost more and are not to the correct size over and over and over again. So there is a potential possibility that we'll be looking at, and we need more information on that, that pipeline and that pump station that might come to an answer quicker than ten years for the projects we have. And that sewer plant there at Poplin Road, or the sewer plant at Crooked Creek, does have some other options of being able to provide sewer in that area for the, for the limited amount they have. So I'll be voting against the condemnations.
Where would that five hundred thousand gallons go?
Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Plant.
There's no capacity there.
There will be in two years.
Well, it, it depends on what day of the week, listening to you, you going to shut it down? You're not going to do it? You going to shut it down?
We very well could, I guess. Three commissioners could at any time stop the funding to that plant as well. I think that what we talked about with that resolution supporting infrastructure, included road infrastructure as well. And if our towns refuse to work with us on rezoning properties and they just take it all up before we can use it for commercial, or use it for industrial, or use it for anything else other than road cloggers, then, yeah, maybe, maybe we need to hold that off. Maybe our Chairman Carbo could help us with that. And he was here speaking on that resolution, and resolution included infrastructure, included road infrastructure as well. To my knowledge, that's why I voted for it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'll be voting against this primarily because, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Matthews, but Phases Two through Four of this Crooked Creek Interceptor are expected to be in excess of thirty million, right? Okay. And, you know, we're going to have tomorrow a, you know, three commissioner elects, new commissioner elects, and there is some prospect, I understand, that if water and sewer rates are rolled back, the funds available to pursue a whole array of capital projects are in doubt suddenly. We've got an eight fifty-three zone project that's quite expensive. We've got, you know, Charlotte Interconnect projects. We've got West Fork Interceptor. We've got Crooked Creek Interceptor. We've got an elevated tank for Indian Trail. I mean, we've got I and I projects. I could go on and on and on. We've got a lot of projects that are not going to be possible if there is a rate rollback. And there's been a lot of talk in terms of what we shouldn't be doing, but we need to be thinking about solutions to our problems. And if indeed there's going to be a rate rollback, then the new board, however it's comprised, is going to have to devote themselves to the serious and hard task of deciding what projects we don't proceed with. And it could very well be that this is one that we don't proceed with. I don't know. But that conversation with the new board needs to happen, in my mind, before we decide as an old board about moving towards condemnation, which I know we all agree is a pretty serious step. I mean, that's the power of government that we all appreciate is, you know, it's, should be, should be considered very, very strongly. So those are my two cents on the, on the question.
Vice Chairman Williams, that was compelling to me. I'll make a motion that we do not approve the condemnation of the right aways. All in favor? Okay. Deputy Manager, comments?
No comments for me, thank you.
Commissioner Simpson?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rushing?
Just to wish you and Commissioner Simpson a happy birthday. We missed you last week, and, and, but happy birthday. I don't, I can't sing, guys, so I'm not going to leave this un-singing. Happy birthday to y'all.
Thank you very much.
Probably the best gift, Christmas, birthday gift we could ever receive.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind people, this coming weekend on the 12th, we've got the Warriors and Warbirds Show. It's a phenomenal show. It's probably the best show on the East Coast featuring vintage aircraft. One thing that's very special about that is that we recognize the outstanding junior ROTC from each one of our high schools. So at eleven o'clock, we'll start that presentation where we'll be giving these, these young people, our future veterans, recognition for their hard work, and it's a phenomenal opportunity. I'm blessed to be able to participate that. Mr. Watson and myself will be handing out those awards. It's a great show, guarantee you, it's best place you could spend your money and, and get entertained. So I hope to see you out there.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Williams?
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I want to commend all the county employees, especially public works. I don't agree with what they bring to us all the time, but to be publicly ridiculed with not having the answers all the time, it just hurts me. And these comments could be worked out one-on-one instead of in a dais, but it's just by an election vote. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.